An earring.
On motions, can you say your last name, please, so we can get it in here?
Okay, earring.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you. Before we come to the business to come before the committee, I just want to just reiterate, just to remind you not to speak out until, you know, I call you to have the floor. I know it's going to be a little difficult, but we'll try to manage as best as we can. And then also pay attention to any background noise you may have where you're at and just maybe re-mute yourself so we don't hear any feedback. So with that, I have some opening remarks I'd like to say first. So thank you all for joining us this evening. As you are aware, on March 26th, I signed a proclamation of disaster for Livingston County. This proclamation was necessary to activate the Livingston County Emergency Operations Plan in response to COVID-19. While this is a global epidemic throughout the United States, their responses are being supported on the federal level, managed on the state level, and executed on the local level. For Livingston County, leading that charge is Jackie Dever, our Public Health Administrator, and Chuck Sho, our ESDA Director. I'll give both of them an opportunity, provide us with an update of where we are at. So we will start with Jackie. Go ahead, Jackie, you have the floor.
Okay, just an update on what we send out for our press releases.
Are we good?
Can everybody hear Jackie?
No.
Yes, yes.
Yes, earring.
How about if I trade you a spot? Thank you. Now, you stay put. Just right here. I can yell a little louder. Okay, I'll just give you an update on what usually goes out on our press releases. We have six total cases right now, and that was one additional case from today. We have three females and three males, all various ages, from 50s up to 80s. They are community spread, the majority of them. There is a couple of them that are contacts of each other, so those cases are related. But other than that, the other four are community spread, which means that it doesn't matter where in the county you live, this is in your area. And I think that's one of the important things we're trying to get across to people right now. They all want to know, where are these cases at? Are they in my community? And I take a number of calls a day about this. It doesn't matter. You really need to assume that anyone you come in contact with could potentially be a case. As far as testing goes, we have 21 labs confirmed, lab cases that have been sent to IDPH that we had to approve based on meeting certain criteria. And primarily because it's so strict, those are hospitalized pneumonia cases, the majority of them. We have 41 that we are aware of that have been sent into private labs, and those are going to either Mayo's or Lab Quest, LabCorp or Quest. But two of those have come back, so we have two that are pending, and everyone else has come back, so we have six positives and the rest are negatives. Chuck and I are working on the PPE part of it and getting all of that out to our nursing homes, fire, police, law enforcement. Who else needs it, Chuck, that we've kind of forgotten about?
First responders.
Oh, yeah, first responders. So EMS, hospitals kind of taking care of their own at this point in time, but they may be asking us for some help, too. So we're working through that and all of those things. The majority of what we got in today will be going out to the nursing homes and EMS tomorrow. There is a Bloomington site, in case you have seen that, that is open for healthcare workers, anyone over the age of 65 with symptoms, anyone with underlying medical conditions with symptoms, and
First responders.
First responders, EMS people. And they all have to be symptomatic. But they are running that, right now, it's being run through the federal government, but that is only going through April 10th, and then those sites will be transferred over to state-run testing sites by IDPH. And all of those labs then will be going down to IDPH, which the turnaround will be much quicker with that route versus the way it's going now. But those are running pretty well. The numbers aren't quite what we expected for the Bloomington area, up in the Chicagoland area. They've just been packed and have to turn away people. I'm sure that will happen within the next couple of weeks here, too. We're a little bit behind what's happening up in the Chicagoland area, but it will be, unfortunately, coming down this way. As far as the Health Department, what we do on our end, anytime we get a positive case, we go back and find out all their contacts, notify all of them, and watch the quarantine and isolation for all of those cases. I'd be glad to take any questions, if anyone has anything at this time.
Okay, Kirkton?
Hold on.
Yeah, on the six positive cases, was there any commonality amongst those six individuals? I mean, or the
One of them was a travel case, and one of them is a contact of that travel case. And that's the only two that have anything in common.
I'm sorry, say that again?
One of them originally was a case that had traveled outside of the U.S., so that was a high-risk group of people to start with. And the second, one of the other cases that we have is a contact of that person.
Okay. That's it? Thank you?
Welcome.
Any other questions for Jackie?
Yeah, I, it's like
Jeff? Okay.
You said you're sending a report out to first responders and everything?
What kind of report? I'm sorry.
That's what I was asking. You said you were sending direction out or something like that, PPE?
We are sending out, oh, we're sending out supplies. So masks, goggles, any kind of respirators, N95 respirators that they might need. Those kind of supplies are going out to EMS, nursing homes, and law enforcement, fire.
Okay.
Does the county have an abundant supply of, or supplies? Are we getting low, or where are we at with that?
Chuck will get into that. That process just changed a little bit within the last couple of days, so Chuck will answer those questions.
Any other questions for Jackie? If not, thank you. Thank you, Jackie, for your update. And now I'll turn it over to Chuck for his remarks.
Okay, good evening. First of all, in this particular case, my primary function is just supporting the Little Health Department, and they're doing a wonderful job in doing what they have to do for Livingston County. Going back to the PPE, to answer your direct question is, no, there's not enough, and no, we don't have a lot stockpiled. If you wouldn't have listened to the governor's press conference this afternoon, the question was asked of him in regards to that, and he commented how it was curtailed in deliveries in China, and that's kind of what we're seeing across the road. So I've heard that twice today in different formats. So there's supplies ordered to be coming into the state of Illinois, but they have not been here, and then they go in there. What they're doing is they're having a joint deposit, and they're coming into Springfield, and then they're separated out to the separate hospitals, counties, health departments. From there is how they're doing that, is how that's working. So, no, we don't have a large stockpile PPE, and it's not coming in, but we're doing our best to get it to us the best we can through the channels that have been given to us. And those channels seem to change on a bi-weekly basis at this point in time. But we're going to work on that. That's a focus we discussed before the meeting, and it'll be primary or focus of a conference call we'll be having tomorrow, to make sure we kind of get that evened out and making it work better. And just to let you know, when we order supplies, we don't always get all the supplies we ask for. If you ask for N95 masks, you don't get all the N95 masks that you request. So it is, it is an issue, but at this point in time, there's nothing that can do about it. Just, you know, for this particular incident, the state is very good about keeping us in the loop. As of this afternoon, I'll be taking part on seven conference calls or webinars a week. I know Jackie has probably more than that, and there's numerous emails that come out every day, so they are kind of keeping us in the loop almost too much to a point to keep up with everything at one point in time, but they are there. Just for your own information, when the governor comes on and does his press conferences every day, we'll give him a, there's a lot of issues that are out there and answered, if you pay attention to them. He does do a pretty good job of giving a roundabout idea of what's going on in the state. The state also has their coronavirus.illinois.gov website, if you need information in regards to things that are going on. You can contact that in regards to a lot of things. There is a county website that has a link to Livingston County Health Department website that also addresses the coronavirus in Livingston County and how it's being addressed through them in regards to that, so you can go directly to either each one of those. I've had a few questions, and I know some of you else have had some questions in regards to assistance on businesses in regards to these issues. If you do go to the coronavirus.illinois.gov website, under the resources, information slot to the site, if you click on that, it'll come down and it gives you some links to some of the business assistance with grants and loans that are available to them. And also, since I get a lot of emails from them, I'll give a shout out to Representative Bennett's website and the GLC-EDC websites. Both of them are working hard to kind of keep all of their citizens up to date in regards to this, and you kind of reference to them and some of the answers you may have in regards to that to make it work in regards to you. We can kind of continue with this. As you may well know, there's a lot of unknowns in regards to this, since it's kind of a new pandemic that's out there. I'll just kind of let you know it's kind of publicly out there. They're looking at this to kind of move up the curve in the next couple of weeks, hoping to have it peak around April 16th. That's one of the reasons why they extended the stay-at-home initiative through the month of April, so they're looking forward to be increasing over the next couple of weeks. But it is modeling, and the modeling issues are going to, it changes every day, so that makes it kind of an unknown, and how you deal with it in regards to that and moving forward with that. A couple of things that you may have also read in the newspapers and in media last few days, there was a mention in the Panograph yesterday in regards to some alternative housing where all the motel associations in Bloomington had been contacted. We did effort that in Livingston County. It's not as easy as one would think it would go. Our best answer is that we cannot use them under any circumstances, so people are reluctant to get into it because of liability issues and the multi-page agreements they have to go in with it, and also potential liability with the county. It's not just finding places to eat. Then the county or some other entity becomes the person where you're having to provide the feeding and care for those people, such as doing their laundry and so forth like that. So it's a large involvement to get into, into doing it. Basically, what that's for is that if you have a person in your home that may have the COVID-19, and you have a person from the family who's living away from that home, that wants to come home, they have to be isolated for that 14 days to do it. Like, if they're coming home from college, they know a place to stay, they have to find alternative housing for that person, but they may not have it. And so that's why you're seeing some of this alternative housing that comes into play in regards to that. That is not, it's separate from the alternative care sites that you've been seeing up in Chicago, where they were converting McCormick Place into, and other areas into those special facilities in regards to that. Just so you are, we do pay attention to the media and information coming forth through to us. You know, we are aware of some of the issues that some of the special care facilities, like the correctional centers. We put that out there to make sure that they are aware that, you know, we do have one in Livingston County, and to be aware that they may have to address that sometime in the future in regards to that, so that's going forward today. Just a few things, just kind of, you know, make sure that you follow the social distance issues that come up with that, so that's kind of the things being pushed, is stay at home and, you know, follow social distance. I know it's harder and harder to get to all the time, but those are the issues that are out there. And just remember, this is the first part of April. This is when the census is due, if you have not done so. Get online, take care of the census, but that's money to be counted. We need to get everybody accounted in regards to that, so make sure that you do take a few times to go ahead and do the census in regards to that. As of late this afternoon, after some communications with several parties today, we did make a decision to postpone the electronic recycling event that was to be held in February. It'll be moved from, postponed from April 18th to Saturday, June 20th at this point in time. We will continue to monitor the COVID-19 situation, and we'll make a final decision on that on June 1st, if we're going to proceed with it or not, but the plans are to do that. And the county, City of Fairberry, our provider of the recycling company is also, they're all on board as of 4:00 this afternoon, so we got everybody on board with that, too. And I realize that some of you have interest in the continuing zoning case for planning at flying services. I know it's scheduled for in a couple of weeks. We're going to effort to make a final decision on Monday of next week to how we're going to proceed and how we're going to do it at the meeting, if we're going to do it as a Zoom meeting, or if we're going to postpone that meeting to a later meeting with the zoning board of appeals. We'll work on that, to make a decision with that by the end of Monday on that day. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Ritter, I believe.
So, yeah, he typed one in the chat box. He's asking, is the state passing out the PPEs by individual county need, or are they dividing them equally?
I would say they're probably, their answer to be is that they're giving to them, to the counties in most need of them, so it's not being provided equally. So let's just say that Chicago and Cook County is getting the majority of them at this point in time, and if you go down through the chain, you have the more populated counties, the collar counties are getting more than us, then from there, the more populated counties as far as, McLean County, so Bloomington Normal has a lot of active cases, so they're getting them. And I assume, I know down in the Belleville-St. Clair County area, down around St. Louis, they've had a lot of cases down in there, so they're getting more down in there. But they are, they did start making efforts this week to at least get some issues to us. We received a shipment on yesterday. We got most of that out today, so they are at least making, it's not what we asked for, but at least they provided us some stuff that we asked for, but it's still in line. We did previously ask for it to come for us, and we're working and sending in some more requests either over the weekend or Monday, once we get everybody kind of on the same page and line what we intend to do with this. And I just, there's one thing I did forget to mention, going through some notes I did forget. There's a resource out there that we're kind of, I got an email on it yesterday, Showbus. Showbus is in operation. If you need deliveries, or if you know of anybody that needs deliveries from them, they're willing to make deliveries to your house. If you just call their Showbus number, 815-9, or it's 800-525-2454, they're willing to work with you and make deliveries to your home. They'll drop it on your doorstep, they don't go in the home. They keep their social distances from you, but they are willing to work with you and kind of keep their operations going at this point in time. So they are, that is another resource that you kind of have out there that you kind of go ahead and continue to use in regards to that.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Just a follow-up on Jackie mentioned, the McLean County drive-through testing. I got an email mid-afternoon today in which they're promoting that site, since it is being, they can handle more people coming through it, so if you, or if you know of anybody that fit the criteria that Jackie mentioned, please go ahead and utilize that if you feel you need to utilize it, because they are willing and wanting to accept people to come through that in order to use it and take advantage of that.
Chuck, are they giving numbers on how much use has been taken place? Someone said like Monday, like 274, and like, has there been numbers given at all?
At the testing facility?
At the, at the fairgrounds there where they're testing?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think they can only take 250 a day.
Correct.
And on the first day, the number that I heard was they had 80 people come through the first day.
Okay.
I've not heard any numbers, well, the second day they had 170-ish, I think.
I heard 120, but that could have been, that was early in the day, so they may have, and then I think they had like 80 the next time, too.
And they just started that on Monday, right, Jackie?
Uh, Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
Because we actually had staff that needed volunteers, so we had staff that went down to help with that. Any other questions? We do have a follow-up question from Mr. Ritter. He's asking, will we start to see the Chicagoland area shipping patients to OSF?
I can't answer that. I mean, that's part of the hospital system and how the states, how hospitals are regulating the things they're doing and how they are making all that work together, but, you know, we have to maintain hospital belts for our own uses in the future, too, because this is
I would say that's
Number one, right.
Because they're making, that's why they're putting up the McCormick Place and doing some of those extra hospital areas like that, too, that should not probably be happening.
And they have also reopened some of the Chicagoland hospitals that closed recently, too, so they have made an effort to open some of the recently closed hospitals, and they're utilizing them, too.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for Chuck or Jackie? From anyone?
Mr. Kirkton. John, can you unmute them, please? Hold on, Mike.
Okay, all set.
Are we good now?
Yep.
This is really, I guess, for Jack. The OSF Hospital there in Pontiac, I'm sure is prepared to receive, you know, a number of patients, but do we know how many people that that hospital can take in? And are there plans that if it's overwhelmed, can we, can they expand to another area to meet its needs of Livingston County specifically?
Right now, we are actually meeting every morning. We have a conference call, actually discussing these kinds of issues and how they're going to handle the influx and what the plan is. So they are currently looking, and Chuck and I will be talking with them tomorrow, too, with our ELC meeting, about the alternate care site. So that would be kind of an overflow. Right now, they have a tent out there that's, that they're triaging people and before they're entering the hospital. So that, that's what the tent is for, if you see it out there. But what they're also going to have to look at is an alternate site where people who don't need, who aren't COVID, who don't need that extra care, still have a place to go to get treatment, almost like a prompt care, if you would. So they are looking at that, and we will be assisting with getting that site up and running when that needs to happen. But those plans are being talked about, and we'll be ready to go when, when it's needed.
When you talk about there's six cases now, I'm assuming, are those six cases in the hospital?
No, no.
They're not?
No, they are not. Actually, one case is out of, out of county, in a hospital out of county. We have two that are in county hospital, and the other three are at home.
Okay, good. Well, I mean, based on those numbers, you should give us time and give the hospital there in Pontiac time to kind of get things ready in case there's a big influx of patients, right?
And that's, that's what we're expecting. Yeah, I mean, six, six are the confirmed cases that we have. I suspect there's a lot more cases out there that, that people are not being tested for because they didn't meet the requirements for testing. You know, we don't have a lot of testing materials, so it's very strict in who can be tested. So there's a lot of people that probably have the regular signs and symptoms of this that are, you know, being told to stay home, isolate, quarantine at home, that we don't know for sure what those numbers are.
Are, are they doing testing at the hospital in Pontiac?
Absolutely. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think, Jim, Jim Carley? Give us one second.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I just wanted to state that I've seen some information out there, some people talking about the fact that we accept Cook County inmates at the, at, you know, our jail, et cetera. And to my knowledge, being on the Sheriff Jail and License Committee, we haven't had any inmates from Cook County in quite some time. And the last time I talked to Stu, we don't have any, and I don't want that, you know, with the issue with their system up there, with their jail, they're having issues. But to my knowledge, we have no Cook County inmates at this time, and we haven't had for several months. If I'm wrong, somebody can correct me, but I believe that's correct.
That would be correct.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? Who? Bill? Oh, Bill?
So Bill Mays is asking, I didn't catch about the prison system, how is that out there? Meaning, I think they're talking, he's asking specifically about our, our correctional center here in Pontiac.
Yeah, the correction, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we got a lot of guards at work out there, and I just haven't had one next to me. How is that being treated?
So I, I was, I was on a call just two nights ago with the governor's office, the Department of Corrections, and IDPH, discussing exactly what was going to happen with Pontiac Correctional Center. And this was, of course, after Stateville happened and, and one of their inmates died. So that is one thing we are working on this week, talking, and one of the things that Chuck and I are going to be discussing again tomorrow with the ELC, is what the plan is, and the National Guard is also working with us on this, on what the plan is to take care of the inmates at the correctional center, and what happens when it gets to the point that they have to be hospitalized in critical care. So we are talking with the hospital about that, what the plan is going to be, and one is being developed. I don't, you know, have that right now, but that is in the process of being looked at. And we should have that, I mean, we need to have that ready to go within the next couple of days. So we'll be discussing that tomorrow.
Do we're not seeing anything out there right now?
I'm sorry?
He said we're not seeing.
We said we're not seeing anything out there right now?
Not that I'm aware of. There's no confirmed cases that have come from there that, that I've been told about.
Okay, all right.
If there's anything different than that, they, you know, they've been communicating pretty well with us, so there's no cases that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jack, yeah, how about our plans with our
Who is it?
federal prison population at our property? And he discussed those people traveling in and out, they're traveling all, so they shut their traveling down? Do you know?
So this is Alina. Yeah, we're not doing transports at this time, as far as the federal housing goes. A lot, the Illinois Supreme Court really shut down the court systems, and that's true on the federal level as well. They're only handling a certain number of cases, but the, for the most part, we are not doing transports right now. So there's not a lot of movement of prisoners in and out of the jail.
Gotcha. And of course, this is always the fine print problems. Do they have any universal responsibilities in a situation like this, if some of those folks start needing help?
Will they pay for their own medical?
Okay, all right, cool.
Okay, hold up on Ritter first. Mr. Wilkie has a question?
Jackie, what about the Fox Center in Dwight? Because Keith Shapiro is
Yes, we are, we are working almost on a daily basis with them. We are aware of what's happened up there, and we're making sure that
But that's
Doing everything we can.
That's a lot of people that are
Correct. Yeah, so we are, we are in daily contact with them.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody heard that, but Bill asked about the Fox Center
No.
up in Dwight, and Jackie said they are working with them. So I think Ritter has a question? Okay, Ritter.
Are we, are we having or experiencing issues within the county of our citizens not practicing social distancing? If we are, what are we doing from Lipco, sheriffs, or what are we doing about that?
As far as I am aware, we have not had any issues, and those, I'm sure, would have been brought to my attention. been brought to my attention, because we are getting questions about whether they can, you know, when they're going to be able to, to start things back up again, and of course, that's the end of April now. So we are really watching it pretty closely. If we get complaints on it, we will take it up with whatever jurisdiction that happens to be, so whatever community it's in, and it will be addressed. We've already talked about that, too, with Randy and the state's attorney, on how we can handle that if need be. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Runyon?
Yes. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I had a question. I, I know of one, for sure, factory in Livingston County, I won't say the name, that is still operating, and I have been told that there was another factory in Livingston County that was operating, and I'm trying to figure out how those are, can be, could be considered essential businesses to operate, and how they could practice social distancing with them, so I was wondering if there was any updates on why those places are still operating?
I don't know.
Just somehow, there's some, there's something they do in that factory
Yeah.
that probably is considered essential, well, as part of, maybe not necessarily the direct product that they're doing, but maybe one of the byproducts that they're making, and it's considered essential as part of the operation of, of equipment, or something that has to go along with it, so that's why they're staying open. There's some hitch in there that says they're an essential business.
That answer your question, Mark?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Mark, I think I know which company you're talking about, I'll call you tonight.
All right.
Okay, any other questions? Gerald? Gerald has a question?
I think that one, one of them is up north here, and I know the manager told the people we got to run business, we got to stay open. I don't, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but somebody I worked with doing there, I don't know how essential it is, but I think somebody needs to check in and out a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on. Thank you, Jackie and Chuck, don't leave though. We appreciate all your comments and remarks.
Kathy, I do have a question. How is essential defined? Because I'm listening to a number of groups say, well, we're essential, and I, and I don't know how that's defined.
Well, it's defined, right, through the government and through his orders.
Well, I
I mean, that's not, that's, that's something that we don't mandate here on our level.
No, I get that, I get that point. I guess what I'm saying is, a lot of people have their own definition of what essential is, and I don't know that there's a list of what falls into that.
There is a list, there is a list. Um, where do you go for that? I can't remember, remember?
So that's, it's on, it's on the Governor's website, so
CoronaIllinois.gov?
CoronaIllinois.gov, and we have all of these listed on our website as well, so we've got links, you know, to what we're doing here locally on the front page of our website, but also, we've developed a page that's COVID-19, it's on the dropdown on county services, so we've added things for both local, state, and federal resources for the public. But yes, someone asked if it's different from state to state by the Governors, and that, that answer is yes. It's the Governor and the state that defines what is essential. Those are listed on their website, so you can find that there, and yes, it will be different from state to state.
Thank you.
Okay. If there is no other remarks or questions, I'm going to go move forward with the meeting. All right. The resolution that you have in front of you affirms and extends the Declaration of Disaster that I previously, previously approved. It authorizes and directs the Administrator of Public Health and the Director of the Livingston County Emergency Management Agency to implement the Livingston County Emergency Operations Plan and coordinate the county's response in this epidemic. The resolution also authorizes these departments to incur obligations on behalf of the county, which are necessary to effectively combat COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of our citizens, their property, and to provide emergency assistance to victims without regard to our normal procedures and formalities. Further, the resolution authorizes these departments to apply for emergency funding grants that have been made available to help offset these costs. So at this time, I will accept a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So move.
Wilkie, I need a second.
Blacker.
Who, Manker?
Manker.
Manker, second it. Okay, I need, any discussion?
Give us a second while we unmute.
Hold on, hold on, everybody. One second. We're trying to unmute everyone, hold on one second. Okay. Is there any discussion before we do roll call?
I got one. Barrettman.
Who's this?
Barrettman.
Barrett, okay, Joel, go ahead.
So I understand that this allows the County Altruator to gain contracts of sort that are necessary to, you know, on the emergency. Are there any contracts or any issues that are going to be executed by the way here based on us authorizing this?
No.
Not immediately, no.
Okay.
But, you know, it does authorize us to apply for grants, there are some grants out there that we need to apply for, and if something did arise to where we would need to expend funds on an emergency level, we would, we would be authorized to do that. Jackie and Chuck specifically would be authorized to take those steps.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? From anybody? Okay, roll call, please, Kristy? Carley?
Yes.
Weller?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Mays?
Yes.
Lovell?
Yes.
Bittstam?
Yes.
Blacker?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Killian? Wilkie?
Yes.
Kirkden?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Fanny? Bunny? Slagle? Manker?
Yes.
Stichen? Schaefer?
Yes.
Fannin?
Yes.
Kestner?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Arbogast? Yes. Barrettman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now, at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Jackie and Chuck for all, and all of our staff members, and all who have played an important role in implementing our response and keeping the public informed of what's happening locally. They have done a fantastic job, and I know it's a very time, it's, it's taken a lot of your time, and I, and we appreciate everything that you guys do. The Health Department has done a great job issuing information through their website, through social media, and by press release, it has become available. This is where you will find most of the updates to the, for the local information. We have added links to the county website, as well as a page specific to COVID-19 that contains links to local information, as well as state and federal. We will continue to issue updates as needed. I'd also like to thank all of our first responders, doctors, and nurses for their tireless efforts in keeping our communities safe, and anyone else out there in our community, the grocery stores for keeping everything stocked, the pharmacies, I mean, everybody, everybody that has, that is doing anything, you know, out there for, for the community and for our people, thank you, from, from the bottom of our hearts here on, on the county level. So with that, I will open it up for public comment. If anybody has any public comment? Go ahead and unmute everyone, John. Okay, we're unmuting everyone again, so hold on a second.
And you guys probably cannot see it through the video, but these two people behind Kathy and I look extremely tired, so I think everybody needs to really understand the magnitude that them two have gone through behind us here, so, yeah.
It's an undaunting task for them, and we solely appreciate everything. Okay, are we good?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes, Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a quick moment, I hope everyone can remember the, the family of our late past Stanley Weber Board Member, longtime.
Yes.
And I don't know when we're going to get together again, I guess it's the best way to, you know, to remember him, and happy was a dear friend of mine, so I just wanted to make sure he was mentioned tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Who? Joel? Did you have a comment?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other public comment from anyone? If not?
What you do during by Fannin?
By Fannin?
Second by Beatty.
Second by Beatty, okay. All in favor? All, same sign. Thank you, everyone, enjoy your night, please stay safe out there, and stay healthy.
Stay home!
Stay home! Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for the thing you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
Yeah, that's all we need, we're good. Thank you, Bill, have a good